Unbelievable. All right. This is the workshop for the 2324 budget. There's some copies in the back if you don't have one. The people who will watch it online, it's budgets posted on to see details on tonight's date.
And there's a hearing tomorrow night.
And then there's a public hearing tomorrow night. So tonight is basically for the aldermen to look at the budget, discuss different issues in front of the public and move on from there. So does anyone have any questions about the budget? We'll start with Alderman Gamble, board one.
Okay.
Instead, if you don't mind, instead of bouncing around, are you, are you, most of your questions, are you getting started in revenues or expenditures first? That way, if we got one on the same page, we can jump in with you.
You want to just do revenues first?
We can. You can go first and then if we've got anything. Bobby's on, Bobby's on the line?
Bobby's on the line.
I really don't have any, any revenue questions. All of my questions are in expenses.
Okay.
Anybody else, revenue questions?
I've got one or two, Mayor. It's the, and I'm looking back on my one from yesterday. Is there any, is there any changes? First off, is there any changes in this one? I think it's the same one from Saturday?
Same one from Saturday, yes.
No change, okay. Because I had my notes on the one from Saturday.
Yeah, nothing's been changed since Saturday.
The, the transfer in 387, that's coming in, utilities, utilities? Please, the transfer in, that's coming in from utilities on revenues?
Yes.
And then one question was on the cellular south on the rent. That's zeroed out, is that?
They took their equipment off the tower.
Off the, okay.
Yeah, they're off the tower now.
And then the very last line in the general fund, the sale of the capital assets, which is the, the two tractors, the 200,000, is that going into general fund or is that going into project fund?
General. I have it going into general. I mean, I think they were purchased out of the general fund, were they not? Streets?
I don't remember. It's been three years ago, two, three years ago, because we waited on them for two years ago. That was all, that was the only questions I had in the revenues, Mayor.
Yeah, the city attorney said it should go into the general fund and then if we need to find any pro, special projects.
Then you can transfer to a specific project.
All right, Bobby, you got any revenue questions?
Yeah, I just had one question and it was pertaining to the tractors. I know we see $200,000 on the total for the auction for the new tractors. I know instead of reserve, but I thought we was gonna set it at 217, almost $18,000.
That, that'll, that'll be even better for us.
Yeah, we just took the rounded number. This is not what we're putting on the bid site. This is just budget numbers.
Right, this is just a budget.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's, I'm just wondering.
They're gonna be working on the auction, I think, in the next week or so.
The gentleman's here today. He's here today. He started taking pictures, he'll video the tractors and, and post everything. So this is not what we're asking for the tractors, it's what we're budgeting as revenue.
And you said 218 per?
It was 217, it's a change.
For both? There's some ways in there.
But other than that, it's the only question I saw.
Okay.
All right.
I do have one or two more.
All right.
The, the insurance rebates through the fire purpose fund, 261, does that still being set aside for the, to get the new truck?
The new truck.
Okay.
Gaming and insurance rebates.
Both go into that? Good deal. And then under the capital projects, the, there was a couple of them on here that I did have a couple of questions on. There's some of them that are highlighted that have been removed and then put into the utilities or wherever. Did we have anything in those? Because it looks like they were all zeroed anyway.
We had originally built them into the capital projects on your expense side and we had to end up cutting the $625,000 sidewalk project from GRPC. We had to cut the 1.6 million for the Wavenkill cutoff and the 278,300 for the stewardship grant.
Whenever you say, "cut those."
Cut the projects. We cut them out of the revenue side of capital, of the capital projects fund and we cut them out of the expense side.
The main reason we would cut, because they have not been funded.
Okay. But now, if we have to fund those, we had the money in the, basically like the money in Trinity, that we said that if we had to do match projects on one-time expenditures, that that's where we would use it from, out of the product, to do our projects.
It's 2.7 coming from Trinity. Ronnie just got that established. And then ARCA money will go right into all of them.
Okay. So will we sit down at a later date and figure out what projects we still want to move forward with? And then, then we can just allocate the, always called it the reserve fund. I've heard it called different names throughout the years, but through the reserve fund, we can still allocate those projects?
Those same projects?
Yes, yeah.
We can, Jeremy, we can allocate?
That amount of money, 2.7.
Yeah.
We wouldn't want to use all of it up.
Right.
Right, just for the match portions.
The GCR.
Easily, I mean, if you did every project that you're, that's being contemplated, you'd still have enough out of 2.7, but I think you'd want to use all of it up. I don't think we'd use all of it up, but we'd use up a good bit of it if you did every project.
The Kill-Waven cutoff's a big one and it's a GCRF grant. It's a $400,000 match. And I'm working with the Board of Supervisors and Senator, I mean, I'm sorry, Congressman Ezel's office to help us out with that match. So, you know, we don't have it yet. There's no reason to put it in the budget yet.
So my question is, removed and balanced to all funds. So really, there was, was there anything, there was anything there to remove?
Well, when we were working through this project, we had it all built in. And as Jay and I were sitting to make the cuts, to make sure all funds balanced and there's an explanation for that too, we had to cut those projects.
Right. We were not dipping into the, the reserve funds to balance the budget?
No, they're not considered in the budget.
Not at all, not at all.
Okay, good deal. And then the only other question, and I think that's about it for mine on revenues, was the interest earned account has a huge increase from 2,523 to 65, the amended budget, and then 100, this last go around and 100 for next year. What is that interest off of this?
Where's, what account?
I'm sorry. It's the, let's see, 340, interest earned?
Oh, okay.
It's under the wastewater grants fund.
Oh, I don't have my BBI up here.
With the, with, with the.
Jerry, do you remember what that was?
Interest earned projected number?
Yes.
That was just based on the increase in interest rates from the prior year to this year. And we thought we were pretty conservative on that. And I just looked at what the balances were and estimated that based on the interest rate you earned. And that's just on your idle funds and your accounts and all interest.
He needs to come up here and just do this. Jerry, can you come up? Thank you.
The interest earned account would be maybe the one account in the whole budget where we just sort of took a shot at it. Like, it wasn't based on exact numbers that we, like, we get on everything else. All the other revenue accounts are very conservative. Probably gonna, probably gonna go over on most of those revenues, a little bit on everything. And on the interest though, we just looked at what funds were earning interest before. And the interest rate is more than doubled on it, so we just doubled that number. It could, it could end up being more than the projected number.
Once we changed banks, the interest earned was, was unbelievable.
Yeah.
It's 5.5 now.
Good deal. That was all I had on revenue.
Okay. Jeremy?
Nope, he covered everything I had.
Okay. All right, let's go on to expenses then. Alderman Gamble?
A lot of my questions on expenses were covered under revenues because it was about the projects that were cut. But there are a number of things, what I looked at was to see, there are certain services that we have to provide that do not generate revenue, but that their expense is important to the city. Like the fire department and the police department and, and other departments like that. But there are expenses in here that I think we need to take a good hard look at and consider either cutting or eliminating. I've run some figures and we are, I think we need to talk about some of our lease issues, especially with the incubator. We're losing over $26,000 a year that it's costing us, the taxpayers, on that building above and beyond what our revenues are on that building. And, you know, it's, it's really getting in bad shape. It's looking terrible. It's, it, it's horrible. I mean, it just doesn't look good. I think we need to, to take a good hard look at that and see what we can do about that. I think that, you know, we're paying $18,000 a year for everybody to have a cellphone. Do all these employees really need an iPhone and do they all really need cellphones? They, most of, we're the only city that provides cellphones to everybody. Bay St. Louis doesn't even do that. So I think we, we might ought to look at that. That would be a place that we could, we could save some money. You know, we're, we're discussing going up on our millage 3.6 percent and we're cutting projects. And this, none of this is personal. This is just a matter of business. You just, if you, you have to live within your means and if you can't afford it, you just have to cut your belt. Another thing that is eating our lunch is the, the civic center. We're losing $82,000 a year on the civic center. That's.
That was the museum. Do you mean over here, the business incubator?
The civic center.
Oh, okay.
The museum.
Yeah. And what I'm saying, I'm not saying that we need to eliminate anybody. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that's run by a nonprofit and I know, because I've looked it up, that there are immense grants out there for museums, especially municipal museums that are associated with the city. And I think that we need to look into that. We can't afford $82,000 a year. We just can't. I mean, you know, everybody wants a raise. Every department wants to increase their budget and we can't. And, and so those are, that's some of the places, the only places that I see, short of cutting services, which I just don't believe we need to even consider, we have to look at. Some other nu, nu. Some other numbers that I ran were what our expenses have gone up. You know, we haven't done, and I'm not justifying anything, I'm just gonna give you some facts. I've pulled actual numbers and, and added stuff up to see how much money we're having to absorb just over the last two years, just in property insurance. It went up 118% from 2021 to 2023. It went up over $200,000. That's a lot of money for us to absorb. In addition to that, the health insurance is gonna go up. Now, that, I discovered today that there's two kinds, we have two kinds of insurance. One is gap insurance and one is the regular health insurance. And it's only the gap, I mean, the gap is staying the same. It's the health insurance that's gonna go up by 55%. That's gonna go up a total of two, it's gonna go up by another $208,000 over that.
I spoke with James Moody right before we came down here and he said he feels really good about that amount. That's a safe amount. He said, hopefully, we won't come in that high, so that may give us a little bit of room.
So just with those two items, we're having to absorb over $400,000, just in two items. That doesn't include all of the other things that have just kicked us in the teeth.
Fuel, supplies.
Absolutely.
And don't forget PERS.
And, and PERS. You know, last year, the, the inflation rate was over 7%. This year, it's already over 8%. You know, I, I take raising taxes very seriously. I, I don't like it. I didn't even want to consider it. But you gotta live within your means and if you can't, if you can't get a raise, everybody else wants a raise. If we can't, I, you know, one person said to me that they thought, well, maybe we oughta not give raises this year. And I said, excuse my French, but I said, "No way in hell. Am I, would I even consider that?" Because a lot of these people are barely over the poverty line now.
Well, the problem is, is that we're trying to keep up with the market around us as well. And I'm not just talking about other municipalities. I'm talking about everything from, you know, some of your big box stores to your restaurants and everything. I mean, you go look at what some of these places are paying, you know, compared to what, what the municipalities are paying. And not only that, not, not to hire people, but also to retain people.
Oh, right.
So it's, I mean, we've got to keep up with it as well.
We do. And, and all of this has increased at a minimum, conservatively, a million, a half a million dollars that we've had to absorb over the last 18 to 24 months. And it's not gonna go down. It isn't. Not one bit of it. The insurance is, every, my insurance on my house almost doubled. So I don't expect these insurance prices to go down at all. And what I'm concerned about, I know we have money in reserve, but, you know, we live in Hurricane Alley, so we don't use our reserve money for, for a bunch of projects. We keep it in reserve in case of a hurricane. And, and, you know, anything can happen. A well can go down, you know, we can have a major gas issue. There's all kinds of things that could happen. And we've got to have that money in reserve. Short of that, the only other thing that we can do is cut services. And, and I just, I'm sorry. I just don't see that happening.
And whenever you, whenever you talk about reserves for projects, the, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly what everybody else calls it. But the way we set it up was, we wanted our reserve fund, which was exactly what you're talking about. Typically, you know, some, some municipalities go for three months of operating, some go for six months. Just depends on what you want to have sitting aside as a reserve. But then you also have a project fund, which a lot of that was one-time revenue sources that we wouldn't, like you said, we wouldn't spend it on day-to-day operations because you're never gonna replenish it. You take that and you put it into day-to-day operations, it's just digging a hole that much deeper for next year. So whenever I say projects coming out of reserve fund, it's basically out of the project fund, not out of the, the three months or six months, whatever, operating for hurricanes and stuff.
Yeah. So, all of that being said, I spent some time with Jimmy Ladner this afternoon because I wanted to get a clear picture and a clear understanding of exactly what all of this is gonna do. And so, for your benefit, my benefit, and the benefit of the public, I discovered today that with a 3.6 increase in the millage, the total amount that this city is gonna realize across the board from all ad valorem tax, that includes tags and real property, everything, $302,000. Now, we're already in a whole half a million. So 302,000 is barely knocks a dent in it. So, you know, it's been misrepresented or misunderstood in some cases that this rate increase is gonna make everybody's taxes go through the roof. It isn't. On a, on $200,000, the most, you know, they're gonna see, like, with the homestead exemption, they're gonna see it increase about $72 on a $200,000.
Per year.
That's right. And that's, that's with homestead exemption. Without homestead exemption, you're looking at $108. So, and the tags, you know, that's minuscule. But if you take, there's 607, there's 6,000, over 6,700 residents here. If everybody had a car, which they don't, but most of them do, and, and several people in a, in a house, you know, it's minuscule per person what this, what this is gonna go up. I don't see any way around it. I just don't. I'm not willing to cut police service. They're already shorthanded. I'm not willing to cut fire. I'm not willing to tell our employees that they can't have a, you know, not even a cost of living raise. People complain all the time that our employees are living barely above the poverty line. Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna keep them, if we're gonna give them raises, if we're gonna do all of this, we've got to be able to pay for it. And these things are far beyond our control. If anybody can see another way around it, please tell me, because I'm listening.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. Bobby?
Yeah, and I just want to elaborate on what Rhonda was saying. I've had quite a few constituents about the possibility of going up 3.6 on our mills. And it's, yeah, they do come to an understanding that for the last. for the last so many years, we've been absorbing the cost of the increases. And we, and you said, you explained that we cannot afford to absorb it anymore. And to Shane's point, we wanna stay competitive by giving our employees more money. So, I mean, we, we have to stay competitive and we have to do things to be there. So, that's, it's, I know it's a hard pill to swallow, but it's something that we have to do. And on, and only other thing I had on expenditures, Shane touched base on that, was our capital projects. The sidewalk project, I know Lisa explained the reason why it was taken off, but I know, I just don't wanna see that go to the wayside, because we waited quite a while for the Safeway School project. And that's really all I have. It just, it's been explained through Shane's conversation, though.
Bobby, I'm staying in contact with Kenneth Yarrow over at GRPC about the sidewalk project. The problem is it's got delayed so long that the cost went up so much.
Right, absolutely. Absolutely.
You know, the money that they allocated for us won't pay for the project right now. So, there's a mechanism in there where we could possibly get another twenty percent. So, that's why I'm staying in touch with Kenneth and trying to get that other twenty percent. Until we get the additional monies, there's no use putting it in the budget right now.
Right, no, absolutely. But I just wanted to continue working, working towards that point.
Yep.
Mayor, I know-
But that, that's all I have on that.
Thanks, Bob.
You know, and it sounds like everybody's on, on the same page with projects. It'd be possible, you know, I know we was on a time crunch with budget and all that stuff, but once we get past this, can we set up a workshop just to discuss projects, how much we wanna allocate of our reserve fund or project fund, or whatever you wanna call it, towards, you know, set aside, reserve first, which would be your, however many months we decide that we wanna have as operating, just in case of a storm and different things, and how much we wanna put towards projects? Because really, you know, we don't wanna replenish it all the way down. So, you know, we also have to look at matches, and, you know, we're steadily putting in for all these projects. If we don't have the match for them, really, it's pointless to steady put in.
Trying to get it, yeah.
So, you know, it may cut back on, you know, some of the, uh, some of the administrative work and some of the footwork of putting in for projects if we don't have the, the funds to match them.
Yeah, we can schedule a workshop, no problem at all.
And then with that being said, well, go ahead. That, that was all I had.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, no, I just, I had a few things, and Shane and I actually talked about some of this stuff under expenditures. The very first line item here, for elected appointed officials, salaries, seventy-two-eight is what was budgeted last year, jumping up to seventy-seven. Why is there an increase there? I don't think there's anything we discussed before.
And I know the, I know the amended was at the seventy-four, but we originally would've been at the seventy-two-eight.
Right, because you had people, there was-
The overlap, the overlap in bringing in the new administration and the prior administration, yeah.
I know the number's correct, but I don't remember exactly why it was slightly longer. Oh, that's what it was, PERS increase. That's what it was.
No, that's in retirement.
No, that was in retirement.
Is that in retirement?
Yeah, I'll have to look on that one.
It's just salary, um.
And it's not much, it's just-
It should be seventy-two-eight.
Seventy-two-eight, that's what, okay.
Unless y'all vote yourself a raise tonight.
No.
Well, the amended budget was seventy-four.
Well, we had a, we had a week.
That was the overlap. Okay. Gotcha.
Old, last administration to the new administration. The same thing happened with the mayor's salary.
So, we're gonna drop that back to the seventy-two-eight?
We can do that. You know, one of the-
If there's an issue with it that I'm not seeing here, because Jerry knows through these things very carefully, I'll, I'll let you all know.
Jerry?
Come to the podium, Jerry. Making come to the podium.
Okay.
Can you come up?
The public can't hear you when you speak from the seat.
That, that line item was looked at early on in the budget process, about two and a half, three weeks ago. So, it's not fresh in my mind. I didn't go over things earlier today. But, uh, we had a reason for it being seventy-seven, like Lisa said. So, uh, but neither one of us can remember how we got here. I don't have my notes from my, the original, when we were doing it, but, um.
In a perfect world, we'd have BBI down here on the computer.
Exactly.
And we, we can't get it, no, so.
Yeah.
It's just a few thousand you're talking about anyway, but I mean, we didn't just come up with that number for a reason.
Yeah. If y'all would, it sounds like all of us is on the same page. If y'all would just look into that and just, without increasing anything for Alderman, just, if it's the seventy-two-eight, then seventy-two-eight, but if there's a reason for it.
Okay.
Well, the only other really questions I had was project stuff that we talked about, the title funds. You know, there's a lot of money sitting there, trying to determine what we're gonna do with that. And then I had a question for Bo about the Boeing machine. You know, we had thirty-eight hundred in there for a Boeing machine. My question to him was, is that enough to get a good enough machine for them that's gonna last a while? You know, if you wanna spend thirty-eight hundred on something, then a year from now, we're looking for four grand, five grand to buy something. This is broke down or busted or something like that. He said to think it's, it's adequate.
I can show you the breakdown on the Tylenol's projects that come up to that amount. I confirmed it with Sonia Slater at DMR.
I'm not really questioning the, the amount, but just go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No.
You know, Tylenol's and Gomez don't have a match, so.
Right.
But we can, when we have the workshop, we can discuss those projects and where we stand on those projects.
Okay.
Anybody see anything else they wanna discuss?
I'm just flipping through pages, looking for some of my notes, so to be just kinda- One of the, one of the questions was, uh, I know we moved beautification into the PD, the salary.
Yes.
Where, where, where was that at in twenty-three?
It was in building department.
Building.
And I have notes out to the side, everything that I added to Mike's budget that relates to that. The chief, excuse me.
The, um, I guess one of the questions that I've got as far as the personnel, is there any, any increase to the number of personnel in any departments? Or a decrease in personnel in any of the departments?
Say it again?
Is there any increase for personnel in any of the departments or a decrease in personnel in any of the departments?
One employee decrease in streets.
Utilities.
One employee decrease in utilities. And one part-time increase as an assistant for me, because Colley was taken away for one week out of every two to do payroll. So, I, I don't have the help. I need the help.
And then, uh, but we're still running, I mean, we're still same number of fire, same number of PD, same number of streets minus a position, same number of utilities minus a position.
Can you think of anybody else?
No, you know, we wish we had more policemen to put on the street. We can't find any candidates. We had once thought the academy and quit two days into it, so, after riding for two and a half months. I, I kinda negotiated a deal with the fire department. They asked for some new positions. But instead of giving them new positions, I gave them a little bit better pay raise. You know, like Ms. Gamble said, inflation's at eight percent. And, um, you know, these guys keep getting three percent pay raises every year, so.
Which department is that?
Fire. I talked to the chief about it, and, um, you know, I'd like to take care of the people that we do have this year, and we can look at his additions maybe next year.
What is the percent that we're looking at? Is there a percent, is there a percent that we're looking at?
On payroll? Five percent.
Across the board? Even if a department hits?
And then the, uh, and then you said that we went more than that for the fire department?
Fire department's five percent.
Okay.
Police department's five percent.
Okay.
We're losing first.
I thought you said, I thought you said you went.
Now, there was a, there was, for the one that we lost in streets and the one that we lost in utilities, Bo asked if he could, giving up that salary with all the benefits that go with those salaries, would it be okay if he took that dollar amount, which was like fourteen-something an hour, and give each of the existing employees, which in streets it was fourteen, a dollar an hour raise? And for utilities, somebody was making thirteen-something. And he gave one dollar an hour raise to the remaining five employees. So, it saves us in the long haul with, uh, PERS, health insurance, all that.
Health insurance, yeah, everything. And those guys are the lowest-paid people in the city, the people who, inflation that we have now, it's hurting the most. As far as the police and fire department, we were loo- we were losing first responders to other municipalities and to other industries like Shane mentioned. So, we, we needed to keep up.
Well, that's why I don't like across-the-board percentage raises, because the lower-end people get a much less raise than the higher-end people. And that's not always equitable.
Actually, the lower-end people got a dollar.
Well, these guys do.
Streets and utilities.
Streets and utilities, but, you know.
The, um, and I see we also have the funds in there for a couple of things in, uh, kind of outfitting the, the new patrol cars and then also in the fire department, the turnout gear.
Yes.
I guess my question is, is that enough turnout gear for, for all firemen, or are we staggering that in, or?
I noticed that he bought turnout gear last year. He said this was to buy the remaining of what he needed. Because apparently it gets old and it ha- gets outdated. So, he bought some of it last year, and this is the remaining part this year.
I think it's a ten-year life cycle. After ten years, it's not worth holding on to. 'Cause I questioned him on that, 'cause it's a big jump.
One other thing that I wanna point out, I had one of Award One resident contact me, who's actually offshore, and asked me to explain this because he's lived here all his life, and he didn't realize it until I explained it to him that, you know, we've heard, well, Waveland has a higher millage rate than a lot of the other places on the coast. And what people don't realize is that all mills are not created equal. Our millage value is much less than the millage value, for instance, in Bay St. Louis. Bay St. Louis's value is a hundred and seventy-nine, ours is eighty-three. It takes two mills in Waveland to do the same thing that one mill does in Bay St. Louis.
Revenue-wise.
And that's right.
And I, I, I posted all that on the City of Waveland Facebook page yesterday to try to explain it to people. And don't you know, last night, I had a call from a person who works in a tax assessor's office. But he, he is, he goes out and assesses property. He doesn't deal with the, the tax end of it. And he was trying to tell me Waven had the highest millage. I said, I agree with him. Waven does have the highest number of mills, but we bring in the lowest amount of revenue. But I put it, I said, go to the City of Waver website, look at it. I have it all listed right there.
The only city on the Gulf Coast that has a lower millage value than Waveland is Paschig Stan. That's it.
And what's the value?
Everybody else is higher than us.
I wonder what the value of your mill is.
I've got it.
And you could go inland quite a ways and you'd still be low.
I got all the numbers somewhere here. I've got a million pieces of paper with documentation on it, but, um, and I'll, I'll find it. But, um, our, our millage value is the lowest in the county and the second lowest on the coast. And if you take the three southern counties, we are right in the middle. So, of, I think it's sixteen municipalities, we're number nine in value. So, there are more people, more cities that have higher millage value than we do.
Which takes less mills to collect the amount of revenue where we're collecting.
That's right. And, and, you know, that's, that's a critical, here it is. That's a critical thing for people to realize. The people that, the, the places that have higher millage rates than us, we're number, we're number nine on the list. There's sixteen. So, the highest millage rate is Poplaville with fifty-nine-point-nine mills. Pasca Gula, fifty-four-point-five.
You're talking about the number, not the millage rate.
The mill, the number of mills, if you're looking just at the number. Because they kept saying, our number was higher. It's not. We're at the medium.
Number of mills versus the millage value.
That's right. And, and so, um, Goshay, Picayune, Paschig Stan, Long Beach, Moss Point, Pasca Gula, Poplaville, all have higher number of mills than we do. But they have, they also have higher millage rates than we do. On the millage rate end, um-
The value per mill?
The value per mill. We are the lowest in the, in Hancock County. So, I think that's really important for the public to con- to understand that we're, even though the number looks big, all isn't as it appears.
As, uh, as we're kinda going through this, the, um, who is the, or I don't wanna say who. Do we have an exempt employee in the streets department? Because we've got a-
His salary split between streets and utilities.
But it wasn't listed as exempt last year.
Last year or this year? In this budget?
This year it's listed as exempt. Last year, I don't think it was.
It wasn't.
Oh, it doesn't make overtime.
I wanted to make sure that, because that's the way he's paid in payroll, is it?
He doesn't make overtime. All right, we got one person that wants to address the board, and we're not taking public comments tonight, but this person heads up an organization that has a spot on our budget with Keep Waven Beautiful, so Mr. Maggot wants to address. It's George Joyce.
Doesn't make a difference from here.
You can, you can come here.
Come on.
Come on up.
All right, this is gonna be a tough one. You don't have to get VFA raises this year.
All right, um, this is addressed to City Beautification Fund. I've been a member of Keep Waven Beautiful for the last twelve years. I was, I served as co-chair and treasurer. Right now, I'm the treasurer. We don't have a secretary right now, unfortunately. Bernie and Lori have had to step down because of family problems. Five years ago, Bernie and I addressed the Board of Aldermen asking for a creation of a City Beautification Fund. We did not have one before that. And Bernie wanted to go for three. I said, let's go for six. And the board gave us five. So, we've had five for the last five years. We have not used the whole amount a few years that goes back into the city funds. But this year, we've gone down to less than two-hundred dollars. So, um, just to let you know what some of this money has been used for, we now have a tamed green that we didn't have before. We have eighteen palm trees around the lighthouse. We have thirty-five crepe myrtles along Coleman Avenue. We have planted over two-hundred trees around the city. We put thirty-eight bushes and shrubs around the city hall. We beautify the Ground Zero Museum and Studio Waveland. Each week, we have block captains that pick up trash over seventeen miles of the sea, of the streets. So, yeah, right now, that five thousand dollars is four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars a month. And, um. We have a project coming up that we would like to have more money for. Like to increase it to eight hu-, eight hundred dollars a month. And, um, just in the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan. The plan in four different places asks to replace trees, rebuild the green tree canopy. And create tree canopies along Old Spanish Trail, Nicholson, and Waveland Avenue. Nicholson has forty-two live oaks on it. So what we, uh, the, the plan that we have right now is we would like to go along with the comprehensive, city comprehensive plan. And start creating avenues of oaks down some of the city streets. So what we have done, if you saw the Seacoast Echoes article last Thursday in the paper, it's asking for. Uh, citizens' input on where they would like to have trees planted. And if we could get volunteers to take care of these trees for a year, they need to be watered for a season. And we would plant the trees, put water bags on them, we just need the citizens to do it. Now, what started all this is, uh, with our protected tree ordinance. When, uh, they cut down a tree that's protected, they have to replace it with a certain amount of trees. We just had somebody recently that cut down three trees, and he owed the city eleven trees. So what he did is he bought eleven trees, called us and said, okay, we're delivering eleven trees to City Hall in July. Said, we can't, well, right now, well, one of the members has those eleven trees sitting in his backyard, and he's gonna take care of them until. February, January, February. But the, the amount of trees that have been allowed to cut down. There's twenty-one trees that are owed to the city right now. So, uh. And we, I don't know if any of these people have actually paid for these trees, or not paid for them, but. In the ordinance right now, what you're supposed to do is you're, if you cut down a tree, and let's say you owe three trees. You either have to plant those three trees on your lot, or donate the three trees to the city. And what we want to do to change the protected tree ordinance, and I would like the Alderman to address this right away, so we can take care of this. Is we want to make it so that. If somebody wants to cut down a tree, and they owe three trees, they pay two hundred and fifty dollars a tree. They don't get the option, they just pay the money upfront, because we had, we had a builder, that he cut down the tree, trees. He owed nine trees, and he sold the lot, and he said, it's not my responsibility anymore. So the city lost nine trees, and that's happened, that's happened just up the street. Actually, I've had, uh, down the block, uh, north and south of me. Where one, uh, one of the neighbors cut down two trees, one of them was a thirty-four inch diameter tree. And he cut down the trees, and that, uh, then he decided to build on the different lot. And he, and so he built about a mile away. We had another one down, down on the south side, am I on a, limiter?
No, Brian?
No, didn't. What he did, when I talked to him, I talked to him personally, and he said, don't have to worry about it, this tree. If he cut it down, I'm gonna plant seven trees on my lot. And when he came up to the Alderman meeting, and he said, this tree was hit by lightning, it's dying, I shouldn't have to. I shouldn't have to put any trees on my lot, and they agreed with him. So he didn't even have to give us one tree for this tree that he cut down. So, um.
Are these certain variety of trees, are these oak trees?
Live.
These are all live oaks.
Oh, my goodness.
They're, they're protected, in the protected tree ordinance. So what?
But I'm sure there was some documentation, because we also require an auger to go out. Whenever, whenever you say that.
This tree was green, it was, it, it actually was hollow in the middle, but, and it, it was, it eventually was gonna die, but probably in thirty years, it would die.
But whenever you say that the Alderman went along with it, that more than likely, there was something that was produced to the Alderman from an auger that showed the tree was in poor health.
And it said it had been hit by lightning, but the tree was green, the, all the foliage on it was green. So it wasn't, it wasn't dying, eventually it would die.
Well, Mr. Maggot. When, when somebody has to replace a tree, when you give them permission to cut a tree down, and they have to get a permit.
Yes.
Replacement trees are a condition of that permit.
Yes.
Don't give them the permit until the tree, until they've got the trees. I mean, that's a simple.
They get the permit to cut down the tree.
Well, they shouldn't, if it's a condition of receiving the permit. Am I incorrect? Mr. Attorney?
Like, what's the consequences, or what's the process?
So if, if it's a condition of the permit, in order to get a permit. To cut a tree down, and you have to replace it, let's say, with three trees. If you couldn't, I mean, since it's a condition of the permit, you hold the permit till you get to three trees.
You can do that, yeah, I don't think you currently do that, but you can do that.
We don't, but that's what I'm saying, that would solve the problem without having to amend everything.
Yeah, I, I did have a, uh, one, a, a person that had got an okay to cut down a tree. He says, I'm gonna, this was a year later, and he said, uh. I wanna build a house now, I owe you two trees, and I said, uh, okay, well, we have another thing that is coming up, that, and you could pay two hundred and fifty dollars. For each tree, and he says, I'll do that, and he came down the next day with a five hundred dollar check and gave it to the city. So that's one of the reasons that I think a lot of people would just, rather than fool around with any trees.
I mean, if the, you, y'all wanna make that an option, when, when P and Z is, is, has them before them. If they wanna give them that option and they take it, I, I don't see a problem with that, do you, Mayor?
We actually wanna make part of that, that part of the ordinance.
Wait, let's just stop right now.
I, I do have one comment to make, Mayor, before we, before we, and I, I know where, where we're going. I'd like to give input on the trees, you said that the comprehensive plan mentions canopy for Waveland Avenue, Old Spanish Trail, and Nicholson Avenue, and you said Nicholson Avenue already has thirty-seven live oaks? Thirty-seven, thirty-one, somewhere's up in there?
That we have right now.
I would, I would, I would like to see focus towards, uh, Waveland Avenue and Old Spanish Trail, since that's, I mean, that really, that's our three main entrances into the city. Waveland Avenue, Old Spanish Trail, Nicholson Avenue, Nicholson Avenue already has thirty-seven, you know.
Right.
And the, the ad in the papers, you know, asking for input, I'd like to give input to say, focus towards Waveland Avenue and Old Spanish Trail.
All right. I need to put a stop to this, because we're getting into conversations that should be held at a regular board meeting. And tree ordinances, all right, this is the workshop. Mr. Maggot, you came up, I don't think I heard your request, maybe I missed it?
Yes, I did, I said, I would like to see. And, and what this, you need the benefits to outweigh the cost, and to beautify our city, to make our city, when people come and look at it. They go to the lighthouse, there's eighteen palm trees around it, I think that makes the lighthouse look that much more attractive. When they go down, let's say Nicholson Avenue, and see avenues of oak trees, that makes the city more attractive. So, uh, the, what I'm requesting is to, uh, increase the, um, the eight hundred dollars. What goes into the beautification fund, eight hundred dollars a month, which would be ninety-six hundred a year. That way, we could go ahead and start with this avenue of project that we want to work on.
Historically, well, past few years, you've given five thousand, have you spent that?
Uh, we, this year, there's two hundred dollars left.
Okay.
The year before that, we, we spent all of it, well, it's not just Keep Waveland Beautiful, it's the city also. That get, that uses that, it's just that we have projects to beautify the city, and so.
The crepe myrtles on Coleman and.
Yeah, well, the crepe myrtles was.
The landscaping around City Hall.
Yeah, there was, uh, thirty-five crepe myrtles down Coleman Avenue.
Mr. Maggot, do y'all look for grants?
We, um. No, we, we don't actually have. We have two people right now, Keep Waveland Beautiful, Brian and myself, that do that, and. I'm, I'm pushing eighties right now, and I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be doing this, you know, this much longer, somebody needs to take over this.
Right, right.
I, I try to do some, you know, do some projects, you know.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Jim. And, and you've heard, you've heard all of us talking about the tight budgets and this and the other, what kind of project do you have coming up? Is that to increase, is it mainly for that one project?
Yes.
Let me ask you this.
It's the, the, our live oak, an eight-foot live oak is what we've been, that's what the people are required to replace the trees that they cut down. They're a hundred and seventy dollars apiece.
Well, you, you've heard us mention setting up a project workshop, just soon as we get this adopted, or shortly thereafter, to discuss projects. Would anybody object to including a project for?
Not at all.
The, like the live oaks or something along those lines?
Yeah, I, I attend most of their meetings, um, they had a project that I thought was interesting, planting wildflowers. At the intersections, uh, as you come over the railroad tracks, on the, uh, north side of the sidewalk. Oh, that takes money.
Yeah.
The state has missis-, they have free, and, and I'll give you the, the communication for that, did you, you get some of that?
Attended at meetings.
Free wildflowers, Mississippi wildflowers.
We can get the, the free seeds, but there's a lot of work that's involved before you put the seeds in.
Oh, I know, I know. I know.
But if it's more of a project, I would say, put it on the project list for the, uh, for the one-time expenditures.
And I'll see what I can do to help you out with grants.
The other member of K D maybe wants to speak.
An answer, but as far as grants. And Jim mentioned, it's down to just he and I right now, supply of these here. Keep Mississippi Beautiful is meeting with us, they're coming down, the administration, the CEOs and whatnot. And representatives of Keep America Beautiful, we're, Keep Mississippi Beautiful is an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful. And we're an affiliate of Keep Mississippi Beautiful. So an answer to grants, yes, we're getting into that. She's gonna cover a lot of things with us, and.
Good.
I invite any of you to attend, it's gonna be the thirteenth, and I'll get, I'll email you all. The location's gonna be at the library, the time, unfortunately, a few of you work that, those hours. But I'll get that information to all of you. And then we're gonna have a committee meeting on the sixteenth, so we, which is a Saturday. So those of you that can't make it on a weekday, you know, we can, uh, share things with you at that time, so that's just what I wanted to add.
And just to let you know that Bay St. Louis does not have a Keep, uh, Bay St. Louis Beautiful anymore. They, for some reason, they just have stopped doing that because of their, their beautification, so. I, I think the benefits of what we want to do would outweigh the costs that would be involved, so. I know money is tight, but. I wanna make the city.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I think putting it in a project, as a, as a project. Instead of into the, the operating, I think, I think it'd be better off to do just as a project.
As opposed to increasing the budget now?
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say listed as a project, I mean, it's.
And Mr. Maggot, stay after, so I can, I have some ideas I'll share with you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maggot. All right. Alderman, any other comments? Ms. Blanchard, City Attorney, Mr. Rigby? Okay. Let's make a motion to adjourn this workshop.
I'll move.
Ward one moves.
I'll second.
Ward three seconds, let's vote, Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned, workshop's adjourned.
And the budget hearing is tomorrow, just in case anyone forgot.
I unplugged you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Bobby.